Back up in session or something, discuss it or something.
Yeah.
Well, do we need to do anything?
Okay, it is Tuesday, August 21st, 2018. Let's call a meeting to order. Please stand for the flood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go into this, do you want to go ahead and do the drawing, Kristin?
We can wait until then, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
But last chance, anybody wants tickets?
Yeah, we might wait. Maybe Eric will give you a hundred dollars or something.
I'm trying to get Larry Vincent, he hasn't gotten it.
Okay, okay. Minutes and reports received and filed.
Well, he wanted his nine for a hundred bucks, Denny.
We've got the July 2018 auditoriums report filed.
Yep. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Uh, we got the MAC Board meeting starting tomorrow night and Thursday, now laws of the Four Seasons. Got staff appreciation barbecue at Health Department tomorrow night, Kristy? All right. And then got the radio with Bob Scrivener and Mark Ellinger on Sunday. So, should be fun. I think that's about it until next week.
Okay, MMRPC executive meeting tomorrow at noon. I have some RPC interviews on Thursday afternoon. That's all I got.
I got CAP Region Board meeting tonight. Health Department Staff Appreciation Barbecue. I think you and I are in charge of liquid refreshments, I think. Uh, Thursday, my meet with Senator McCaskill's office, and the Boos BBQ is Thursday night. Friday is the Honor Flight Radio-Thon, so you guys all need to give $300 to match my bid. And then I'm speaking to Rotary West at noon. And Saturday is the Yellis, Feshel, Gala at the Lake. And Sunday is the Bridal Spectacular, Jeff, if you want to come.
Yeah, who signed me up for that email list?
It wasn't me.
Debbie.
Wasn't me.
That was a guilty laugh there.
Wasn't me, honest.
I know, wasn't you? Email, what's that?
Okay, and that's all I've got. Okay, appointments by commission, appointment to the Care Leave Committee.
On our Care Leave Committee, there were three-year terms, actually expired the first of August. The positions were Mike Sapp, Robin Blevins, and then we had Kevin from EMS, but I asked Matt if he would be on the Care Leave Committee, and they all three agreed to serve another term. So we got the bigger departments covered. So I would ask that Mike Sapp, Matthew, and Robin come and get reappointed till August 1st of 2021.
So you got Matt Leninworth?
Yes, sorry, Matt Leninworth. And he may later decide somebody else in his department, but as of now...
So him or his appointee?
Yeah. Well, it's gonna have to be him unless we appoint somebody else, unless you guys appoint somebody else.
Or his designee.
Yeah, we've never really had a designee vote. I'd have to go back and check the Bible, I don't think that's allowed. And then you can see the terms of the other ones expire in 2020.
How often do you guys meet?
We only meet when there's a need.
Okay.
And Larry Vincent is still our chairman.
No term limit, man, I'll tell you.
Do we have a crown for him or anything?
Normally it's on him, that's right.
I have a crown on my desk, yeah.
I'm fine with it too, yeah.
Yeah.
I move that we appoint... Who are the new ones?
The Mike Sapp, the last three.
Oh, Michael Kuta's on here for eight-one, right? Chelsea too, or not?
No, the ones that we're doing are the ones that ended 2021, the last three on there.
Okay, I move that we appoint Mike Sapp, Matt Leninworth, and Robin Blevins to the Care Leave Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Larry Bishop's on there till 2020, so tell him he can't retire.
That's gonna work out just perfect.
I backfired on you.
Yeah, we need to, we need to extend that.
Yeah, 2022.
I've been known not to ask, I just do it.
We can reject the retirement, correct?
Yeah. You serve until replaced, I think, or something like that. Okay, unfinished, any unfinished business? New business, council payable review?
I'd ask for approval of the council payable, pending review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion of the tax levy for 2018.
Again, this is just a discussion of the tax levy. I did send you guys an email with all the data. You set the tax levy for GR and Public Works, and it's due by September 1st of every year. And so next week, the notice already is in the paper, that your public hearing is next Tuesday, the 28th. And that's when you'll set it, and then we'll send it to the Secretary of State. I don't know if you guys have any questions about the information, or anything that I sent you. I gave you the history of the tax levy, gave you the history of the evaluations, you know, going back to, well, I think the evaluations go back to 1995 of the property values. And then paperwork that the state has us fill out, and then the rollback, the rollback that, you know, we went into with the EMS sales tax. So I'm gonna be suggesting that general revenue is gonna have to drop to .07 from .08, and that's basically due to the sales tax revenue is up, and that mechanism for the 60% is to level off our property tax and sales tax. So that is the ceiling for that after the rollback, to .0707. Roombridge, I'm suggesting you go up to the ceiling, which is 27.25. It was 27.16 before.
Yeah, we don't have to make a decision today, it's next week, right?
That's right.
Yeah, that's only if Larry Bishop stays till 2022, 2023.
So, I'm concerned that our GR is being rolled back again. I mean, what does that, does that do to the EMS offset? I mean, is that a trend that's gonna continue, or...
It's based on the sales tax, basically, and 60% of it. So if sales tax is higher than we anticipated, then, I don't know if you guys remember, we got a supplemental pay of sales tax in December of last year. What the rollback does is take the calculations of the first six months of sales tax and double that, and then it goes through the rollback process. But then when you get to the next year, you have to go back and see what you were, what you thought it was gonna be, and what it really was. And that amount, you have to either add or subtract. And this year I had to add quite a bit. So that's what made that come down. And it was because of that supplemental pay that...
Well, sales tax revenue was up.
Right.
And our evaluation was probably up a little bit too, so between the both of them.
I mean, really only up in valuation.
Let's see, what did it say? How much did the value go up?
I think one point. From last year.
I mean, I know it was minimal, but it all just makes a difference on the rollback.
.074, so it wasn't even half of, half of...
I guess my concern is, I mean, yeah, sales taxes are up, but our tax levy's going down, so I mean, are we ever getting really ahead? I mean, are we gaining in revenue?
We're gaining in sales tax at this point, and not in GR tax, if that makes sense. But it affects the rollback in GR.
Right. But I mean, in total dollars, are we actually getting more revenue with the rollback money and the taxes, or is it just staying flat?
Basically stays.
You should only be seeing the growth.
Right.
So the growth in property taxes should be taken into calculation, but as sales tax goes up, property tax will continue to go down. They will offset each other.
I think that's where a lot of counties got in trouble, because their tax base is mostly on sales tax versus, ours is kind of a balance between property and sales tax. So, you know, it's just trying to keep those two balanced, the property and the sales tax. We don't rely heavily on that, so...
I guess I'd just like to look at that more. I mean, obviously, we've got new properties being built every year. I mean, are we seeing that growth? Are we seeing the growth in the, in the sales tax, I mean, whether that's two or 3%? Are we, are revenues growing, or are we just offsetting that by the rollback? You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think between the two, you'd have to, you know, bring it both out and together.
Right.
Right, without whether, I mean, and then you're always based on whether everybody's gonna pay their taxes or not. Not everybody pays their taxes, so you're behind, right, Larry? Everybody pays their taxes.
Bingo.
So, on actual dollars in, it might be a little, you know, this is based on what we hope to collect, if that makes sense.
Right. But that's pretty consistent year to year, I mean, on who pays and who doesn't pay.
And again, in three years, then, we have the ability to sell that property.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, just let me know this week, and otherwise it'd be on there for next Tuesday for approval and public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion of Recorder Needs Pay forms.
And so we put this on both open and closed, so if we want to talk about particular people, we probably need to do that closed. So I'll let Ralph if you...
I believe it's more appropriate to wait until the closed session.
Okay. First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Five.
This is for $82,169.87. This is the WIF money that was received for the grant for the new building, so no action today, just the first reading.
Okay. Health Department Moving Services Quote.
We'd spoken a week or two ago that there is a cooperative procurement option available to us, and Kristy was able to meet with Amerigo Cardwell, a representative from their bottom line estimate, $8,320 to move everything. So we're just looking for a direction today on if that's something you'd want to pursue.
That's everything from our building and from what we have in store at the emergency services building.
What's the valuation option one and valuation option two? At the bottom.
I don't know what that is. The bottom line is 8,320.
Okay.
Even that's the two places.
Yeah, but it's 115, I don't know. I looked at that, I'm really not sure what it means, but the bottom line estimate is what it is. I confirmed that that is off of the state contract, and they said that it is, so...
Looking at a one-day move, is what they're...
What's that?
They're looking at a one-day move.
I don't know. They might be able to move the stuff from EST one day and then move the stuff out of our building another day, because the building's gonna be finished, we'll be able to move the stuff out of EST in there sooner.
Okay, that is all the pickup date and delivery date.
Yeah.
That's a lot of stuff to move in a day.
That's what it costs.
So... I don't have that much stuff to move, so I don't know what, I mean, if that's a state contract price, I think it should be fair. If not, we're gonna have to bid it out.
Are you seeing a list of stuff or something, Jeff, or...
No, I think they just went and looked at it and based it on poundage or something, and is that what they did, Kristy? Or Jennifer, or Greg?
He just walked through and counted what we had.
Okay.
They got it all spelled out, what you all have to do. Do you all have to empty file cabinets out?
Yeah.
Then they move the boxes, do they provide the boxes and...
I had a listed question. So they will provide boxes if we want, of course, they rent them, we fill them, we give them back. So anything that we want to keep or boxes along time, of course, we would not use their boxes, because then we'd have to buy them. They provide labels. If any cloud cabinets over to George, we have to empty them. We have a labeling system. All the offices at the new building are labeled, so everyone will have a number, and we put your number on all of your boxes. They'll move the computers if we disconnect them all, but that's up to, I agree, we work that out, Brian.
Brian's gonna help move, right?
Oh, yeah.
Did include the refrigerators and stuff?
Do what?
Did include the refrigerators.
Did include. We have to empty them, which we'll do that anyway because of the vaccines. If they plan to pick up one day and deliver the next, we'll have to take the vaccines to St. Mary's for storage, we have an agreement with them.
You guys want to do?
That's a hefty amount, but it's still gonna be probably the best way to do it. I mean, you got a lot, yeah, and if... We could end up with stuff lost for a long time.
So, obviously, we had some money in there for FFNE, or are you gonna need anything?
Every, we bought a few things, like we bought a new blood draw chair, but we were able to buy that by corporate pickup money. We, what, there's, the only thing that I still think we need to purchase is for the one conference room, but we have with Medicaid money that we can use, so I don't think we'll need any of that $9,000 that you set aside for FFNE.
All right, so I say we get it done. You good with that?
I agree.
Okay. Do we need to award this, or what do we need to...
I would just say approval to go ahead.
Okay. I move that we approve the quote from Cardwell to move the Health Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I don't see Donnie here, so...
Yeah, I think the judge took care of that.
Oh.
Did you hear that?
No, I don't need to call.
Uh, no. Judge Beadham was gonna take care of that.
Oh.
Okay.
So no action then?
Okay, approval of Cole County Small Community Cooperative Project Agreements with St. Martins and Centertown.
Okay, I had sent a sample of treatments just a couple weeks ago, had Jill review it, and she okayed it. And basically, what we did on small community cooperative projects is each one that the commission approved the grant funding for, I sent them a letter, basically asking them to sign and return to us saying that they accepted the award amount. And so I decided that as those come in, I'd get them scheduled for commission approval for the agreement. And I have City of St. Martins and the Village of Centertown. St. Martins is for $250,000, and their project is to improve Business 50 West for motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists, and includes shoulder paving, resurfacing, and a school crossing, and miscellaneous safety improvements. In Centertown, they will improve Main Street and Monroe Street corridors for pedestrians and motorists, and their improvements include sidewalk constructions, storm wire improvements, curb and gutter, and asphalt pavement milling and overlay. And just really quick, the agreement spells out some specifics that we needed in here to cover ourselves and make sure the communities were gonna do the projects as they, they needed to be done. And I'll just hit on a few main items. The one thing was that they had to have the project under construction within 24 months, and that's a reasonable progress policy. They will be the contracted, or the project administrators, not the county. They will acquire all the right-of-way easements needed. After the project's done, they will maintain it. They will follow all American with Disabilities Act requirements for the project, if they're building sidewalk, follow all prevailing wage law that's in effect at the time of bidding. And the use of funds, it has to be used for the project. They can't use it for internal employee costs incurred by the city for the project. Any permits that they have to get, they have to obtain. Progress payments will be made. We do have an item in there for the auditor, because we had $400,000 funded it this year, we can't disperse more than that. If enough requests for reimbursement come in, I doubt that that would happen. That shouldn't be more into next year or the year after. So we got that covered too. And really, that's in a nutshell, the basics of the agreement. Pretty straightforward, we wanted to keep it simple and not get too carried away with it. So, like I said, I got the two for City of St. Martins and the Village of Centertown, and I'd recommend approval of both of those.
I'm good. You guys got questions?
All right, Ryan, what do you...
I got Russellville. I saw the letter came in yesterday, so I'll have that one on the agenda soon, and then any others, we'll get them done as soon as we can.
Go ahead and get them on there as soon as you get them.
Yep.
I move that we approve and sign the agreements with St. Martins and Centertown.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion of County Property on Mount Carmel Road.
We had a request from a joining landowner due to drought conditions in that area. There has gotten approval from the ASES to install an emergency well. The lines are shown there where they currently at on our, on our property. And what we're requesting is a grant easement so they can cross the property and provide electricity.
This is our property here, right?
Yeah, it's that triangle right here. And currently, all we're using it for is just storage, materials, shot rock, topsoil, that type of items. So, you know, the addition of the line really wouldn't cause us any problems. We don't have a, see an issue with it. So we'll recommend an approval.
So, where's their well going? Because this is what I was concerned about, was these lines going through here, and then us having the ability to sell that property or whatever. So, I mean, because obviously, there's a 60-foot, 60-foot right-of-way that you can't build on this line here.
Right.
So, is, where's the well going? Here?
The well, the way I understand from the landowners being this area right here.
So why can't they put the pole out along in the actual right-of-way out here and bring it?
There had to be clearing, and right now, we're wanting to retain that as a shield to keep people. We have issues dropping down here.
Right, but this guy to the, to the west here, he just cleared all this, right?
Right.
I just, I mean, so if we allow them to put this through here, then, then our property, we can't build anything underneath those lines.
Without moving, without moving.
Right. Or we couldn't sell, sell that property, because now there's an easement to his well. Am I, am I right, or...
The line can always be moved. It's up to, if we'd solid in the land, the new landowner would want to build something there, they would have to work with the rivers to have the line moved.
Okay, so, so what is your, I mean, is your recommendation, to give him an easement, or just allow him to hook up?
Our recommendation is to let him have the easement. Like I said, all we're using it for right now is just storage material. It really wouldn't cause us any issues.
Right. So I'd be more apt to allow him to hook up to our line, but not give him the easement. Just because, once we establish the easement, how are we gonna get rid of it?
Well, Three Rivers, like what they've done with this in the past, Chris, the easement's not set in stone. It's more a blanket easement. I know like on my place, when I...
Okay.
I signed an easement to a neighbor to get electricity. It doesn't, it doesn't call out meets and bounds to the easement, you know, it just gives them permission to be able to install the line across there.
So is it a, is it a defined easement or not?
No, it's just more an easement.
So you're, you're just basically giving them permission to do it?
Yes.
But it's not a set 60-foot wide easement?
No, it's not. It's not. If anything, it'd only be 30 feet. They, Three Rivers requires 15 feet either side of the center line.
It's more than that.
Our building, our building lines is 30 feet, or 15 foot either side of the holes. That's what they can clear. I know like on my property, personal property, is that they can clear 15 feet either side of the line.
I'm pretty sure they told me 60 feet, it's 30 foot either side.
If it's, if it's the main line, that might be different.
It's just a service line.
Yeah, a service line, they just told, or line, like what they've got, the timber cut back is just 30 feet.
Okay.
I know with buildings, they can't build any closer than 15 feet off the, our line.
So, we're, we're calling it an easement, but it's not a defined easement on the plat?
Right. Yeah, it's not drawn out on the plat or anything else.
Okay.
What are they adding, all these here?
Pardon?
What are they adding?
They'd be adding from here over to this property.
Oh, these are already here?
Yeah, those are already existing.
Oh shit, those are already there. I mean, shoot, those are already there.
But those are, but those are ours. So, I mean, those are easy to move, if we were to sell it. That's the end of the line, right?
Yeah, the end of the line, I think there's a meter base on this pole here. It's not being used, but there is a meter base, that's where the former residence used to be.
What's going there to the west? Do we know?
Trailer.
Trailer park?
As far as we know, no. Trailer park is gonna be trailer sales.
Oh. Okay. I just didn't want to do something that was gonna inhibit our ability to sell that property or do something with it if we decided to.
There, you know, if the commission would decide to sell it, there is, we've had contacts with two different people now that would be interested in it, so...
You guys still want to keep it?
We originally purchased it to possibly put in a salt storage facility, just a single bay for that area. You know, that's up to the commission. You know, right now, we're, the trucks that are in that area have to run all the way back to our shop, which is probably 10 or 15 miles. But with the budget situation, it probably won't be in the near future, Chris, I'll be honest. I just didn't know what the...
But you can still do it regardless of this, so...
Right.
Yeah.
The power poles that are there would, you know, for what we would do, if we put in a salt storage, we'd have to have electricity, just to be able to have lights in the, in the salt storage building, as well as to run a pump for electric, for calcium chloride. You know, and that's why, if we proceed forward with what we want to do with it, the power line won't cause no issues. And I know the family that owns the property, they are, I don't know how much rain they got over the weekend, but they're in need of water badly. They were, like I said, able to get an emergency assistance in the ASES office to build and install a well.
Can't have somebody haul it in?
Oh, they could, yeah.
Yeah. Obviously, they need a more permanent solution than that, so, I mean, so what's the recommendation, to give them the easement?
I met with Larry Bishop and Cliff yesterday when we were talking about it, and they both said that they didn't see an issue with it, for the plans that we have for the property.
Yeah, I've got to enter with what we've, what you've got. I'm, I'm fine with it.
So who is the people that we were granting easement to?
It's Drew's family.
Drew?
Grus.
Oh, Grus, okay. Oh, you've already got it. You've already got the paperwork here, huh?
Yeah.
Hiding it on me.
I'll be honest, Chris, I didn't read it, but it looks similar to one I signed for my property when neighbors bought the new house. property when neighbors bought a new house.
Did you look at this, Jill?
No.
I didn't, I'll be honest, I just got it Friday, and I didn't, we're in budget, and I didn't get a chance to even think about bringing it up here.
I mean, this looks like it's establishing a fixed easement.
There's no description on it, Chris. It just, the easement would be for where the power line is installed, is what, the way it was explained to me when I did mine.
You guys want to look at this, you good with this? I mean, I just want to make sure that we can move the poles at some, some point.
Yeah, approve that pending Jill's review.
Yeah.
That's fine. Maybe that we approve and sign the right-of-way easement pending review by council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, it's nine thirty, we still got time. While you're here, we've got the, we talked about this last week on Elston Road from Laurie Higgins, you might as well bring that with you, too.
Oh, no, I don't remember.
If we need to take any action, or if she wants to come up here and request that approval be rescinded, I'm not gonna approve it, but I talked with Larry and Shannon about it, it's our right-of-way, we still maintain it, there is a ditch there, they cut the grass on it, we need it for another road that comes through there, so I think there's, I don't think we screwed it up, I think they're trying to say we screwed it up on it, and there's, we didn't make a mistake on it, so if she wants to come up and, and request it, I guess she can come do that, but.
I agree. I mean, they're proceeding with putting the driveway in, I guess they're on the-
It was all dealing with a refinance on the other property, and we've got the bank signed off on it, so we allowed them for the pipe in, he says he's not gonna use it unless forced, but, you know, it meets requirements for the banks.
Okay.
Well, if we, if we sign that over, they're gonna be landlocked, so they're gonna create another problem, so I don't even know if we can do that. I think they'd probably be able to retain ownership of that right-of-way if they really wanted to fight it. Or even go across that other property through adverse possession, and, so.
Any other issues? What time is it?
Twenty-five, so we could-
Do close session?
We could, yeah, that, or we can draw real quick, or do the close session, or which-
You wanna do the close first, or?
Let's do the drawing first.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might change how I vote if I don't win sometime. No, I re, I take that back, 'cause I'll end up winning the Chiefs ticket or something. I could donate them back.
You get to draw. Their names are in it, so.
Wait! I thought we were a team.
Okay, well, we'll see if we're a team.
Yeah.
So, Raffle for United Way, first item, a team cooler donated by Sam.
You can pick your team.
Okay.
Yep, pick your team.
If I win, is it probably the Chiefs or something?
You can pick, no.
Tom Lawler.
No, not Tom, this is the Chiefs, she said it was wrong with the Chiefs.
Next, we have four M U basketball tickets, they were donated by University of Missouri Athletic Department. Larry Benz.
It's budget time, you know, I wouldn't mind going to the game.
Two Kansas City Chiefs tickets donated by-
No, don't you even draw my name.
Oh, watch Jeff, Jeff get-
John Wheeler.
I saw a J on there, scared me.
Four St. Louis Cardinals tickets donated by Capital Query.
When they played in ours?
That'll be like a couple more years.
You can't win two. Larry Benz. Which one he wants you?
I had baseball.
You only get one?
I guess you can win two.
I'll donate the basketball tickets back.
Don't put his name back in there.
So we're not even drawing basketball tickets.
Throw all his tickets out.
Deanne Sandy.
That was for the basketball tickets?
For Springfield Card- yeah, that was, M U basketball.
Sam Bushman, really?
Yeah, Sam Bushman.
I saw how Debbie was picking through there and made sure she found the right one.
I go to that anyway.
Oh, you didn't, okay. The Springfield games?
Yeah.
Those are more fun, didn't they?
Don Crennan.
You say some really good-
Don won the Springfield tickets.
Next, we have a lottery tree which is sitting over there, a hundred dollars worth of lottery ticket.
Whole team there, awesome.
Vivian Amet.
And you know, when Brad looks out, everybody's nice.
So the last four items are paid for by donations from elected officials of the department.
Yeah, yeah.
Kristen personally hounded until we don't have any, so she's good for that.
That's good, babe.
This is the gun.
Now you can draw my name, too.
A Henry Lever Action twenty-two rifle.
I like guns, do it.
He don't need no guns. Kevin Woodson, he's got plenty of guns.
What do you mean, nobody needs guns, everybody needs a gun.
A hundred dollars cash.
Everybody needs a bunch of guns.
Sam Bushman.
What was that one for?
That's nice, Sam, a hundred dollars.
Ah, well, he'll take that, won't he?
L B Harrigan. L B Harrigan.
L B doesn't need cash.
And fifty dollars cash.
It's pound Harrigan, too, by the way.
Mike Satt.
That's pound, not L B.
That's it, thank you, everyone.
Who gets the lottery tickets?
I want to see if my ticket's even in there.
Huh? Oh, Vivian, it's in there.
I want a refund.
Lottery tickets in there?
Yeah.
Why are you digging down in there? All right, so we're gonna do close session?
We could do the close session with Ralph, I think, and Jill's got, we've got something with Judge.
Huh? Yeah, yeah. I move we go into close session pursuant to section six ten point oh two one of the revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issued sub thirteen.
Steph seconds.
We're just, we're just doing personnel.
Personnel, Ralph call.
Sam.
Yes.
Jeff. Yeah, I'm gonna look at it.
Yes.
Second, I got Sam.
Good?
Okay, we'll go back into open session.
Okay.
We were already in open session after we came out of close session.
I'll make it, I'll make it, bye.
So we have the presentation by Victory Enterprises and Strategic Capital, and we have Matt Alsager and Steve Tilly and Tommy Robbins over here that are with, with both groups, so, anyway, it's all yours.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for taking time to hear our presentation, and hear our thoughts, and hear a little bit about us, and how our vision for this contract and working with the county on economic development, business development services, as well as government relations. So, again, Matt Alsager with Victory Enterprises.
And Steve Tilly with Strategic Capital Consulting.
So, actually, I want to bring the next slide. So who we are, so Victory Enterprises, we were founded in downtown Fort Iowa over twenty-five years ago. We have a national award-winning, full-service media management and development firm. We have offices in nine states, team of very experienced, very driven professionals, ranging from communications, corporate strategy, strategic marketing, message development, and business development. Our clients that we've represented over the past years have ranged from Fortune 500 companies, presidential campaigns, and statewide ballot measures, as well as statewide elected officials. And then I'll have Steve kind of give a little bit about Strategic Capital.
Sure, I was, I founded the company in, in two thousand twelve, I had the privilege and the honor to serve in the Missouri General Assembly from two thousand four to two thousand twelve. I was majority leader for four years, I was speaker for two years. We, we focus on governmental affairs and business development, and we're blessed with a broad and diverse client base, ranging from Express Scripts, Anheuser-Busch, Tesla, Uber, the trade association that represents Ameren, Centene, Truman Presidential Library, all the way down to small developers and small business, including cities and counties. And so, we, we've got experience in a broad base of issues, and we've got expertise that, that we feel like delivers for those clients.
And so, when we first started talking and seeing this opportunity, our two firms work together very, very well, as far as, you know, Victory is really great at analyzing our clients and looking at the story that we want to tell. In this case, we want to tell the story of why you should locate to Coal County. As Steve mentioned, these are just a few of the clients that his firm has represented. Since we're a private entity, we can, you know, be more than happy to talk about the companies that we have, that we've done, if you have questions. So, why are we here? When we look around, since two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen, we look at the neighboring communities and their, and their growth. Boone County, nine point six percent increase, Calhwood County, one point six, and Coal County, one percent increase. Now, I realize that, you know, the counties are different and make up, the counties are different in who they house, but at the same time, we feel that there's a huge opportunity that we can work with the assets that we currently have in this community, in this county, and really, and look to move that needle. So how we move that needle is, we, you know, we think differently. We want to leverage our current assets, you know, for instance, Lincoln University, HBCU, Land Grant University, they have, in just one example, they've got a great aquaculture program. A few, last year, I toured the University of Maryland and their, their aquaculture research center, so there should be a great opportunity to sit those two groups down and look at collaboration. And that's just, that's just one example. Lincoln also has a great, the, the connection that they did with the Link, the collaboration, they're not, they're used, I mean, they're not unopposed to sitting down, and it's just the whole thing, let's think different. The state trade associations, you know, we house some of the groups that have statewide presence, national presence, and sometimes even global presence. One, for instance, is building a institute that is gonna talk about, you know, the benefits that the soybean industry has. So let's work with those groups and look at, you know, how can we better benefit? You know, looking at the demographics of Coal County, we got a lot of opportunity to grow in the agribusiness space that I can see, and since we house all of these great trade associations, let's work with them, collaborate with them, and sit down and just have those conversations. State government, state government has been a great resource for us in many, many different ways. One of the largest employers in town, reason why our unemployment is, is low, and Steve will go into our vision on using and working with state government to grow our county. The state and governmental department heads are the cabinet members of the state, you know, we look at those, and we, you know, we have J triple C, so let's sit down and have meetings with the Department of Corrections and talk through what are ways that we can bolster J triple C, you know, what are we, ways that we can bolster the agribusiness community, what are ways that we can bolster economic development? But let's just sit down and have those conversations, be present, and talk through the assets that we have. And then, looking at national, regional, and private partnerships, you know, are there ways that we can partner with our surrounding communities and projects that can help bolster, you know, the Boone County area, the Calhwood County area, the Coal County area, because at the same time, we're all kind of surrounded in one. And then, we want to look inward, we want to look at what we currently have, sit down with them, ask where can we grow, and really bolster that sort of growth. Our approach is, is different, we see this as a pie, if you will. So you have different, different areas, so you have the economic, business development outreach, you have strategic marketing, you have government relations. All three of those have to work together in order to succeed, we have to understand what we currently have, we have to tell the story, and we have to be present at the table, because more, more deals are done in the, in the state capital than, than anywhere else. That's where everyone is represented, and Steve will go into that and how they've been successful in the past. So strategic marketing, first, our, first what we look at is analyzing the county's unique assets. Second, we, we would develop a marketing plan, including a splash page, meaning we would drive traffic to a, a, one page on why Coal County is here, why we're better, why you should locate here, and then develop the unique marketing materials that we can distribute out, talking about the great assets that we have, and tell our story. And then, third, look at creating some digital content for distribution that we can share on social media, since that traction that we can get is, is huge. With, with our team's award-winning digital department is, is a great way to kind of look at how, how, how can we be different?
The, to sup, supplement what Matt was just talking about, whenever I was on my way up here, I began to reflect on the last, well, eight years of, of service and then six years of lobbying, and you start to think of all the lift, little different communities and counties and entities that lobbied for you, and, you know, lobbied for, lobbied for you, or, or lobbied you as, as an elected official, and, and just like to name a few, you know, small counties, towns like Wildwood, Arnold, these are all people that have lobbyists, and I began to think, you know, who, what, is, is there any county or municipality in the state that needs a lobbyist more than Coal County? And so you start talking about St. Louis, Kansas City, Jackson County, St. Louis County, and to be honest with you, none of those are in need of a lobbyist more so than Coal County, and you ask, why is that? Because there's no county that is directly or indirectly more dependent on state government than Coal County. When there is a layoff or a shrinkage of state workforce, Coal County is affected most. When there is a change in fee structure to state employees, Coal County is affected most. So even though it isn't the largest county in the state, it's certainly the most dependent on it. And, and it kind of dovetails, and I, and I won't rehash all the, all the things on the slides, because, I mean, obviously, what a lobbyist does is identify the needs and desires, and advocates for things that you're supportive of, and obviously fights against things that could be detrimental to the county. But it certainly dovetails directly into economic development. And, and let me give you an example, are you guys familiar with the NGA project that's in North City? It's, it's currently in South City, there was a, a bid process, it potentially was gonna move to Illinois, thanks to the help of Roy Blunt and, and the legislative leaders, it's gonna stay in St. Louis, it's a two billion dollar project, several thousand jobs, but, but, but my point to it is, is what you're gonna see beyond the two billion dollar and several thousand jobs, around that site, you're gonna see hundreds of millions of dollars invested in companies that are gonna be supportive of NGA. And why is that? Because NGA issues one point five billion dollars of contracts yearly. And so what companies will do is they want a piece of that pie, and so they'll move to St. Louis to support those contracts. And one thing I, I, I don't believe that Coal County has done a good job of, is the Office of Administration here yearly issues hundreds of millions of dollars of RFP contracts. Well, those are all public information, there's no reason why we shouldn't, with the governmental affairs team and the economic development team, to reach out to the companies that are receiving RFPs, and then make the case of why Coal County is a good place for them to be, to service the contracts. So that's just one example. Anytime you look at, at a big company that's looking at expanding, almost always, the first discussion is with their governmental affairs team of where would be a location, where politically can we get it done, where might there be the best incentive programs to get it done? So I think integrating, and to echo what Matt said earlier, is, is kind of a three-pronged approach, where all, all parts are working together. I think having a governmental affairs team that works with your economic development team is pivotal to making sure it's effective, and it works.
So, and this is just, this slide really kind of identifies kind of what Steve is saying. So, the way that our two firms work is we look at, as I said, we look at, you know, what, what story can we tell, develop that into- know, what, what story can we tell? Develop that into marketing materials, and then Steve's team works the government side, and we both work on the, the business development of getting in front of those businesses, casting as many lines as we can. But we got to have a story to tell. We got to have the assets that we can highlight. We have to look at, we got to look inward on this. On the community relations portion of it, you know, it's all, it's all, it's all one. You know, this is a great, I've, I moved here in two thousand six and met my wife here and just have always loved this community. So being an advocate about the community and wanting to grow the community is huge. One with, you know, bolstering the relationships with the state offices and state officials, which Steve's team on the government relations side will do, is supporting, you know, the current programs that are, that are already going. And it's being an advocate to continue being a champion and a partner and working with the city and chamber. All of those partners have to work together in order to, for, for any of us to grow. So our budget with marketing, public relations, government relations, and business and economic development boils down to ten thousand dollars a month. That can be either monthly, quarterly, or annually. But if, if awarded, we can work through that. So why, you know, why us? You know, why, why, why take a look at us? Why listen to us? It's because really three things. We're different. We think differently. We're highly aggressive. We're very motivated. And it's really just kind of the outside-the-box thought process. We're efficient. You know, we're delivering more services at a lower cost, maximizing the taxpayer dollars. And at the end of it, we're visionary. And, you know, I live by the principles can't, didn't do anything. And I am more than happy, I'll use the fishing analogy, that let's throw as many lines out there, but at some point, we will get them into the boat. But we got to cast them. We got to look forward. We got to think outside the box.
Yeah. And, you know, I think, you know, I'm proud of our, the clients that I represent, and I would encourage you to call any of them and ask them if we've been a good return on investment and we've been effective for them. And that's any of them, period. Because our firm is, is based on results, and I think we do that. Now, I've never sat in those seats as commissioners, but I certainly have sat in a similar seat as an elected official. And I understand the challenges that you guys face and, you know, the responsibility of your constituents and being a good steward of the taxpayer dollars. And I can tell you, I believe that our proposal gives you the best bang for the ball, for the buck, and will give you the best results at the end of the day. I'm completely confident of that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think one question I have, and we had the addendum to it, was about the marketing materials, and you kind of touched on that. What additional costs do you see there being with that? I mean, how much, I guess a splash page, you're going to have to have somebody host it, printing the material and stuff. Is it minimal, or what do you see?
It would, it would really kind of depend on scope of work. I will tell you that our firm is a full service, so we do everything from consulting to media management to digital work and also printing. So having that kind of approach, we give our clients a great service as far as cost goes. So I guess to answer your question is depending on...
I was kind of figuring this out, whatever it'd be. Depends on where we want to go with it.
So what are you going to do differently for economic development than what we're doing now? I mean, how?
I'll give you a couple of examples. One, we work with a group in DC who represents all Fortune 500 companies, both internationally and nationally. And they called us and they wanted to do, they represent an online retailer, and they wanted to look at going into three communities in Iowa. So what we did was, since we have a heavy representation in Iowa, we worked with all the municipalities ranging from the city, the city officials, county officials, and their economic development folks to sit down and have a conversation about this online retailer wanting to come and work with their small businesses. That's just one example. Second example is, you know, our firm handled a very large acquisition in the Midwest. And so what we did is we provided the entire ground game as far as, you know, working with the local municipalities, working with the local leaders. And in that, you know, as Steve mentioned, anytime that these companies look to expand, look to relocate, they always sit down with their GR people because they want to talk about the climate of those communities. So one, you know, having Steve represent you all on the lobby side, you indirectly have a seat at all of his clients' tables. So it's working with them, knowing that we know the assets. We know exactly where, where, where we want to go. But, you know, first of all, it's, we want to sit down with you all and say, what do you guys want? Where do you see this going? And work with the county, work with the city and chamber to have the holistic approach. So what do we, what, how would we approach it? As, as Steve mentioned, working through Office of Administration and looking at the different RFPs that happen, you know, working, looking at a regional, a regional approach. So that's, you know, sitting down with the folks in Boone County. I know that the Port Initiative and Port Project, you know, you've worked with Callaway County. We've done those before. So, does that answer your question?
Well, I, I'd like to expand on it, Commissioner. One, we'd like to identify what you're doing and what you think's working and what's not working. You know, I mean, my, to boil it down, if you think what you're doing is working very, very well, then there's no reason to change. If you feel like it's not working very, very well, and maybe you're not getting the best return on investment, then you've got to change what you're doing. So I'd want to identify, sit down and visit with what you're doing. I certainly think being aggressive with the OA makes sense. I certainly think identifying the large employers, not just my clients, but, but luckily with, with what I do, if I don't represent them, I know somebody that does, okay? And we can, we can take a look at all the statewide employers and just make sure that, that they're aware of Cole County, what you have to offer, and the benefits of coming here if they choose to grow. Okay? So I, I think it's, I think it's looking what you're doing, identifying what's working, see if we can do it better, and what's not working, see if we can bring additional tools to the table to make sure that Cole County succeeds.
Really, we just want to be present. You know, more, I was in, I was at the state fair, and they were, they were talking about just the different, the, the tools at the table and, and really using what we have. And that's, you know, the state government is, is one of them. But it's also looking beyond that, looking at, as Steve said, you know, what you're doing and what we, what you want to do differently.
And, and I would tell, tell you, I think you guys have a fantastic delegation in the General Assembly that, that if something is needed, that we can work with them, whether it be TIFs or incentives or whatever you guys choose to do, we, we certainly can work with them because you do have a good delegation. I mean, it's a, it's, you know, you had the Majority Leader of the Senate who did a fantastic job. This now you're Lieutenant Governor. You're, you know, but you, you traditionally bring great people to the Capitol that I had the pleasure to serve with, and I'm sure working with them in any capacity that would be needed would, would be welcomed.
Got any questions? So, anything else, Jeff?
I think that's all I got.
Well, thank you for your time. We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Are we, are we done then?
I think we're...
Besides, we got a closed session. I thought somebody said eleven fifteen or something was...
I think it's Jill. Yeah, I think it's Jill. She's, she can check with...
She said he wasn't going to be available till eleven fifteen.
Okay. I've got some mail I've received, so I'll look over that. This is from Dr. Loody to the dear commissioners. I want to express my heartfelt thanks for the recent recognition and presentation of the signed and sealed news tribune article. See, Jeff, we, the recognition from the M E M S A was quite an honor and totally unexpected. If not for the support of the Cole County EMS staff and Capital Region Medical Center, it would not have been possible. I truly appreciate your efforts to support the service. I believe the service is headed in the right direction and will become an example for all other EMS services in the state. I have truly been blessed in my life, and words cannot express the gratitude in your commitment to both C C EMS and my tenure as medical director. I look forward to continuing to work with the staff at C C EMS and with the Cole County Commission. The county is in good hands with your service and dedication to its citizens. Sincerely, Charles J. Loody, D O. Got this. This is actually addressed to Mayor Turgeon, but it's from Natural Resources. I was C C'd.
You filibustering here?
Yeah, Woodlawn, Old, Old City Cemetery at ten twenty-two and one thousand East McCarty is, was listed in the National Register of Historic Places on July twenty-third. So that's that. We have an invitation, which I asked you guys if you wanted to go to. It is September twelfth in the Hall of the House of Representatives, reception and auction of the exclusive Capital Art prints to follow in third floor, row ten. It's five hundred dollars per guest, so.
I can only afford to go to ham breakfast auctions.
Oh, okay.
That's about the extent I can get for twelve auctions.
That is all I have. Sure. Yeah, if you want to go to that.
What is that? Another closed session?
Yeah, it was legal.
Legal.
Hey, Judge, the judge is not going to be here till eleven fifteen.
It's fine.
We'll have recess.
Stand in recess till eleven fifteen?
Yeah.
Maybe we stand in recess till eleven fifteen.
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, Randy?
You know, they have that achievement of...